Select Board's meeting, February 18th, 2020. In attendance, Chairman Fox, Vice Chairman Moguln, Joe Didi, Chief Administrative Officer, Carl Steinhardt, Administrative Assistant Cindy Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, February 18th. Before we begin, we got some sad news. We lost two people this past week. Bill Frasco, longtime police officer, grew up here in town, left after getting a law degree and became a lawyer. He passed away. And we also had former selectmen, and Jack Sinico, who has also served on the Board of Appeals, that passed away over the weekend. So if we could have a moment of silence for these two people before we begin. Thank you. The first thing we have is public comments. This gives anybody an opportunity, if they'd like to make a statement to the Select Board, that's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to do that. I ask if you're going to make a statement, if you please stand and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to make a statement? All right. I see none, so, but I do see our first appointment here. Gentlemen, come on up. Troy. I told the Board you asked for, to meet with us, and they said to set it up, so you have the floor, sir.
All right. So as you know, we are in the process of raising funds for the new Pan Am at the War Monument. As with the previous monument that we, that we updated for Iraq, Afghanistan, Beirut, and the Gulf War, we've been quoted at a cost of $5,000. Engraving services will be provided at no, at no charge. We're going, we're using Chuck, Chuck Blood again. Everything seemed to work out well the last time, so why reinvent the wheel? So at present, this is our money guy right here, the Legion is managing the money for us. We have teamed up, as you know, VFW and the Legion to, to manifest this project, so I'll let him talk about what we've raised so far. And then I'll, I'll discuss our fundraising that we're going to be starting, hopefully as soon as this week, and any town monies that may be available to us to be able to put toward that. I believe if we can at least get 50% raised, we can get, we can get things started, and then the remaining 50% is due at the time of delivery. I believe that's, that's how they did it the last time, 50/50, so.
Yeah. Is there months out by the time they actually get it in and everything else, right? That was the process.
Exactly. And so our goal is, if possible, to unveil this at the 250th Parade in October.
October.
Because we're not having a Veterans Day Parade this year. It's just going to be too much with the 250th Parade being not even a month out from Veterans Day. And the same people who are, would be organizing the Veterans Day Parade are involved with the 250th Parade. So we just feel as though it's asking too much of the volunteers and asking too much of the town to come out within a month for, for two parades. So we're going to kind of merge it and have, have a veterans-type ceremony, hopefully to unveil this beforehand. That will kick the parade off. That's our, that's our goal anyway, if we can, if we're able to do that. So, turn it over to Rick.
So far, we got two private donations of $100 each, and we had a spaghetti supper fundraiser for 363. So we have a total of $563.
Right. So this week, I'm hoping, I'm going to be working with Rick to set up a crowdfunding. I have a pretty good relationship with the administrators on the community forums for Facebook, so we're hoping setting that up will encourage some smaller, multiple small dollar donations of 20 to 30 dollars, hopefully get us over the finish line a lot, a lot quicker than having people, having people come down. It's just a natural progression in, in fundraising for where we're at right now. I have placed a call into Representative Baldiga. He has not called me back yet, but I'm not sure this session if we can, he can even request monies like this, because of course it's an abridged session being an election year, so I'm not sure if he can even introduce legislation to ask for that, but, but I don't know. He has not returned my phone call yet. We don't have a state senator right now. John Bealas really can't do much for us, or John, you know, John can't, you know, whoever, whoever wins the election, they, they can't do anything for us now. I mean, John Bealas still is technically representative for Westfield, not Southwick, so anything really has to come from that at this point, if we can get some more money from the state like we did the last time. So that's where we're at, and I understand there's $2,300 left over. That's what we discussed.
Yeah, we checked, and we got $2,300, so that along with the three plus that you raised, you got your half.
So you want, you're willing to put the whole?
I, I think that, that was the purpose of the money, so.
Well, it kind of sits there, and we use it for maintenance or whatever, as, as the years go on.
It's an eligible expense.
So, yeah, it fits into it.
Right.
Okay.
Hopefully you'll raise over 5,000, and then the extras, you know, it goes right back in, it goes for repairs, and, you know.
Excellent. It would, Cindy, this would actually be for, for each of them, because what, what this, what this panel is going to represent are residents of the town who moved to Southwick after they served.
Okay.
Right now, they can't be on the current ones. And we have people, you know, Don Morris, former fire chief, Matt Edgerton.
John.
John Andrews.
Right.
You know, people that have been here for, for decades and decades, probably, you know, longer than we've even been alive, but they weren't from here. You know, John Andrews is from Westport, Don Morris is from Washington State, now Matt Edgerton is from Grandville, but they've been here, you know, and the policy was adopted, so, you know, following that policy, all these, all these folks, you know, more than meet the requirements. And Rick also has, he said he had five names of people who turned in paperwork, and it looks like Moguln said, it's going to correct a lot of injustices, because they're more from here than they were where they grew up, so. But the rules are, the rules are, you have to be from here, enlisted from here, deployed from here, something, and they, they hadn't done that. So that's what this is, that's what this is for. But there's going to be a lot of familiar names on there, for sure.
And it's a different, it's a different panel, right?
Yes, it's a completely different panel.
So it's not, it's not doing anything to conflict with the rules under which the other panel has named.
Correct.
Absolutely right. It's just that this panel will have, you know, all, all of the, you know, all of our wars and theaters on there, because there's going to be less names, but there's still going to be, I'd say quite a few, especially for, especially for World War II and Vietnam. I think, I think we're going to have quite a bit under.
And the total's five grand-ish?
Five grand, yeah. It's going to be the exact same size as the, as the Afghanistan and Iraq panel.
That we just did.
Yeah.
Except we're going to put it on probably the sidewalk area, so we won't, we won't have any cement work for now.
Yes.
Until we get to the backside, then we'll have to figure something out.
Exactly. So, and so, and the goal is to have everything on the front, is exactly for that reason, so we don't have to make it ADA compliant and do all kinds of concrete work like we had with the last one.
Right.
So it would be, as you're walking up the pathway from the parking lot, it would be, it would be to the right, the right hand side.
All right. So you've already been talking to Chuck Blood about all the specs and the, you know, the sizing of it and everything?
Yeah. Yeah, and he had everything, because it was so recent. He still had all the, all the files, and, yeah, he and I worked very closely.
He does good work.
Yeah.
So they need, so they need a bill from him to generate PO, to generate those funds?
Yeah, we'll need, we'll need some paperwork, too.
Right, so, reach out to Carl, and you guys will figure that out.
Yeah.
Perfect. Would the Board like to entertain some monies from our gift account to start this thing rolling a little bit faster?
Yeah, I would absolutely make that motion, thinking by bills?
There you go.
500, yeah.
Yep.
Along with the other grant.
Correct.
Correct.
Form of a motion.
So you've got, yeah.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
There's another five hundred.
So you've got 29, right?
That's awesome.
Already, plus five?
Yep.
Well, there's 23.
Plus six he's got already.
He's got two, plus, yeah, three, plus five, seven, three.
Well, yeah, yeah. They're friends.
Right. Well, their money's as good as everybody's. 34?
And I think, I think there's a couple hundred in the civic fund left over from the stuff we did at the high school.
Okay.
I think maybe 120 or maybe 220 left, so I'll look at that.
Okay.
You know, and that can go over.
Sure.
We appreciate you trying to get this done for the 250th, because, you know, it's a big year, and this would fit, fit in perfectly.
If it were a perfect timing, it would be perfect.
Yeah, yeah. Be great, so.
Yeah, the church can do a pancake breakfast that morning, they'll have their ceremony right there.
That's not a bad idea. That's not a bad idea.
10 bucks, 10 bucks.
There you go.
You'll raise some more money, right?
There you go.
So, just so, just so I'm clear as, as to the process here, you've, you've authorized $500, so that will be put into the Legion account when, and then we need to also give you paperwork in the form of an invoice for, for a purchase order for the remainders of the money?
Right.
Right. Might work easier is that 500, probably Carl can put it towards the, the 23 we have to help generate that PO versus giving it to the Legion.
Right, we could just combine those two amounts.
I was thinking one.
Have Mr. Blood.
Towards Mr. Blood, right away.
Mr. Blood invoices us for that as part of the share.
You follow me? Then you guys.
He's already set up in our system as a vendor.
Right, okay.
That way, that, and those numbers go right to him. You guys steal a fundraise, but at least it's enough to get it ordered.
Okay.
Excellent.
Excellent. Yeah, and looks like we'll get that crowdfunding up, like I said, this week, I mean, we can get that set up pretty quick, and we're, as the VFW is reconstituting itself, we have an agreement with the Legion now, so I know the commander has expressed interest in hosting a turkey shoot down there, and, you know, our, that would be our event, so the proceeds, just like from their spaghetti dinner, the proceeds we make from that would go towards this as well, so that would be our.
Oh, we don't have to run this time and get shot at, so that's good. I was just getting a little nervous when he said turkey shoot. I know. But that's good, we don't, we're out.
That's close. Careful if you get invited to the Legion.
Moving targets is always one of them.
Oh, that's what I was afraid of, yeah. Well, Cindy has a great picture on the way in, if you saw her. She, she did put a picture on the wall while you were on the way in.
No long suits?
You were in the suits with the wheelbarrow.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Pegasus.
Yes. I mean, that might lend itself, that might lend itself to a town report pitcher.
It's just Bay.
Oh, good lord.
That was part of our storm water management plan, to keep, keep the streets clean.
That was the year before last I had those shoes, too.
All right, gentlemen, we thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you.
All right, guys, good seeing you, too.
All right, I see the deputy chief sitting there.
He'll take him right out of there.
So, right, rather than, I know he's probably had a long day, so.
His days are always long.
So why don't you come on up and, and we can go over any.
Thank you for taking me out of order.
Issues that you have.
All right.
We're out of order.
This court's out of order. All right, let's not start.
So, as you may have noticed, in old business, they came up for Fire Department EMT, firefighter pool selection and staffing. Unfortunately, we had one of our candidates withdraw his application, and that has left us somewhat scrambling, I guess is the best way to put it. Last time we spoke, obviously the Select Board had made their selection, Stephen Backman is in the process of getting his physical taken care of, and once that happens, and we have his paperwork back, if everything's good, he can then go ahead and schedule his PAT, and then the plan would be to get him into the Fire Academy, hopefully for July, if not July, into September. His schedule right now is that he would be a paramedic if all goes as planned by June.
Right.
And that is the same with Brian Schneider, if all goes as planned by the end of June, but let's just say conservatively by July 1st.
Right.
Both should be up and running, so we'd have two additional paramedics, which certainly would help our cause. We still have a, a significant gap as we move forward, and that's kind of what I wanted to address tonight, is that our tier year, two-year, our three-year plan of providing ALS 24/7 is starting to look like it's still obtainable, but not as easy as I thought it was going to be in the beginning, to be honest with you. My thought was that we would have a bigger pool of applicants for the positions, because it is a desirable department to work for. People that have come to us have said that, but the honesty is that there's not a lot of candidates out there right now, no matter who you ask, or the size of their department, or whether they provide ALS.
Everyone's having the same problem.
They are. And as Mr. Moguln said last time, it's because a lot of people are working, and they are. We have two candidates left in the pool. I would like the Select Board to consider at least hiring one more, at this time being out of that pool, because even though we've posted the position, it's probably still going to be another four months before we have another viable candidate or a group of candidates to put forth to the Select Board. That's just typically how long the process takes. So that's already going to put me into the summertime. It certainly would mean that Josh Gerard, who's one of the candidates, would be four months closer towards becoming a paramedic and pretty much getting into the hardest part of his didactic program, but also getting ready to start his clinical programs, which would start probably in the early winter at that point, so he would have to his July semester, because paramedic in that break doesn't take a summer break, then, then he'd have his fall semester, and then the rest would be moving into the, the clinical part of it, which is both clinical setting in the hospital and then his ride time. So theoretically, Josh and Kerry both are in the same program, are on the same track for success about the same time, July and June. So if you put that in perspective, that's a year and three months, four months away from now, those two paramedics coming on board would certainly help us get to that point of, okay, we've got three years, three years is going to be here before we know it, and trying to fulfill that requirement as well as keep our people moving through and getting people on board, trained and ready to go to that level, is definitely going to be a challenge. Josh has proven himself as a very viable candidate. He has worked out great as an EMT. He is already certified firefighter one and two, so there's no need to send him to the Fire Academy, and he would be paramedic, again, probably, let's say, a year from July as well, too. So Brian coming on right now would serve the immediate need, Stephen coming in at the same time, once both of them are certified, with, hopefully they'll both do it on their first pass, but it is a difficult exam. The goal obviously should be for anybody that's working with us to make sure that they have whatever it takes to get them to that paramedic level. And I understand that it is a commitment for the town to put somebody on who's not certified a paramedic right now, because there is a chance that they may not get it. I understand that. That certainly is part of the discussion, but I don't, we don't know until we know, and that's the reality of it all. So you have a lot of candidates that would be good for Southwick, but I think most of those candidates are in the same boat. They're working towards their paramedic certification, so that they could be part of our department. So I would like very much for the Select Board to revisit it and move, at least to put one, if not two, into the rotation, and see if we can get them through the process.
Doesn't change anything. They're still that far out, so whether we hire them tomorrow, it still doesn't change where they come into play. You still need paramedics. So the only thing we're doing is guaranteeing them a job that they're not done with school yet.
Right.
Right, because they're still working the hours they work. Nothing's changed. They're, they're out doing their classes, wanting to do their classes, of course, and, you know, some of them don't have other jobs, they're in filling up shifts and getting paid. I get that.
Mm-hmm.
So nothing really changes, other than we're going to go ahead and commit a year and something ahead of time, which doesn't change your world really either. It really.
But it, it puts people in the building, and right now, that's.
But they're in the building now.
Part of. No.
Well, the one we're speaking of, if he's not in the building, is at school. I, I don't see where that.
Yeah, but it's a condition.
Right.
By the way, it's a condition. In other words, they have so much time to circulate to get to that certification, so it's part of the offer of employment, so it's not guaranteeing anybody a job.
I, I, okay.
Right? Either they produce the outcome by securing the EMTP licensure, or if they don't.
Right.
Then they don't have a job after that period of time. That's part of the offer of employment.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to reiterate what I said last, last time, is that when I looked at the candidates, and I was concerned about people staying in Southwick.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it bared out, you know, that.
Oh, I, I think they're great guys, and they'll stay in Southwick, but in the same breath, I don't want to, I don't want to be forced with candidates that we're getting forced to take, because, jeez, they're a year or something out, and we, we got to do this. I don't think we have to do it today. I, I know you need the help. I get it, whether we're doing per diem or any other way we're getting there. And I don't think by grabbing them today, it solves anything more than, than waiting. I, I don't see where it solves it, other than we have them on.
I, I think, well, number one, you have individual, well, this particular individual's been here in front of us twice.
Yeah.
You're, you're going to get to the point where someone might say, you know what? I've been there twice.
Yeah.
And maybe I'm going to go somewhere else.
And he's in the face of the same thing, because he's still not a paramedic, and, and he's going to have the same conversation somewhere. He's well aware of that.
Yeah.
He's well aware when he comes in here, that he isn't at the level he needs to be, and he's trying.
Yeah. No, I, I, I hear what you're saying, Joe. I'm just saying that we have an opportunity, you know, that I feel, a candidate that's going to stay, you know, and I'm willing to make that investment in that candidate. We have a recommendation from our, our deputy chief.
Yeah.
Who's obviously being a little more forceful tonight than, than the last time, so I think he realized that this is in the best interest of, of the department and the town of Southwick. So I would be willing to make a motion that we offer employment to Mr. Gerard. And I'm not hearing a second.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to second the motion, and I, I, I want a week to think about it. I really do.
Okay.
I think this is, I agree with Joe, and, and, you know, it's exactly what I said from last week or two weeks ago when we last met, was, I love Josh. I think he's going to be a great firefighter, paramedic.
Oh, absolutely.
I just think we got to get there. And my take, I, I think we just need one week to think through it. I think that the other thing is, we need to start even thinking outside the box to get us from here to there, even, even with this plan, even with, even if we fully staffed according to, we hired everyone that came in front of us, or at least three out of the ones that came in front of us last week, you'd, we'd still have a spot for Josh when the time came. And I know we're not supposed to think like that, but I am, because I think he's a valuable addition to the department when the timing's right and he has his stuff.
Well, maybe he has his stuff. If he was four months from having this thing done, this wouldn't, done.
And then the other, you know, the other, is there, you know, can we, maybe we need to think a little more outside the box. Can, can we, it, there's going to be a class of recruits coming out of Greenfield or Springfield soon?
They're all taken, though.
June?
Right.
They all taken?
But I think they, they all, no, but they all knew that we were hiring. We had a couple of candidates from that pool.
Yep.
But they didn't make it to the Select Board.
That they came through the process and didn't make it.
They came through the process and, right.
Fair enough. I wasn't part of that, so I don't know.
Right.
So, because, I mean, in my day job, we've resorted now to, we're going to college campuses now, and we're, at career fairs, we're asking to get in front of engineering classes to say, can we talk to you?
And, but again, I think if we really start, there are plans in place, I mean, and I don't know all the details, but the city of West Springfield now takes people that aren't paramedics and promises them the world to get them to become paramedics. There's, and I see a lot of danger in that as well, too, because you could be taking somebody who's not quite sure they want to do the job, asking them to do the job, putting a heavy financial investment in them.
Oh, yeah.
And ending up with nothing in the end.
Halfway through, they walk away, yeah.
But the problem is, that employee is committed to serve out their term, so you could literally have a dud that, you know, it's almost like a baseball contract where the guy gets injured, or a pitcher that can't throw a strike anymore, you're stuck with them. And so this is what some of the departments are resorting to, because they don't have a strong candidate in front of them, so.
Well, as is structured, where again, where we have that 30-month, you know, thing, at the worst case scenario, and that's part of the offer of employment, so there's no.
And I would hate for that to happen.
There's no, either they make it or not.
And nobody wants, and especially in this particular case, nobody wants to be in that spot.
And what you're doing now is, you're not looking for one, because you're still looking for two. So you're looking for two people.
Oh, I know it. I know it.
Yeah. I think that we're going to table this till next week.
Fair enough.
You know, let people digest it, you know, but, you know.
We hear you.
This is a tough spot.
We hear you.
Believe me, I've, I've thought nothing of this since earlier today, right? Because when I saw it on here and, and we spoke, I really want to, this is a tough one. But I, I, and again, it's not, it's nothing with, with Mr. Gerard, I, you know, I admire him, you know, we were at the thing, he gets recognized for the, you know, the number of hours he put, the number of calls he went, I get it. If we were that much closer to the finish line, I, this would be a slam dunker.
Right.
No doubt about it. So give me one week to, to put this all together and see what I can gyrate in my small brain.
That is much appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate you going out of order as well, too.
Okay, no problem.
Have a good night, Ed.
Good night. All right, we're back on the agenda. I'd like to acknowledge payroll warrant number 2017 dated 2/18/20 in amount of $219,459.81. Now, this payable warrant number 2021B dated 2/10/2020 in the amount of $252,923.05. And now we need a motion to accept the regular session minutes of 2/420.
I think we're going to table those till the next meeting, correct?
Okay.
Have you already made the changes in there?
Yeah, just in review. You can accept it after this.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. To unanimous. Do we have any executive minutes?
No, there was not one.
Okay. All right, then we're going to go right into the action folder, and.
First item was tabled.
The first item, well, I think what we can do is, we were going to have a certificate of appreciation for Reserve Officer Richenberg.
Reckonberga.
Reckonberga, thank you. Who, we accepted her resignation. We'll be typing up a, one where the Board can sign during the week.
Good.
Is that fine? Okay. And we'd like to thank her for her service to the community and wish her well in her future endeavors. Then we need to vote to approve the disposal of surplus, Southwick Police Department telephone used equipment.
Right, because you have the new, um, Blizzard Internet Protocol System in place now through Valley, so this has got to be surplus and taken off our inventory.
Okay, so I need a motion. I need a second.
Yeah, I guess.[1521.13] Yeah, I guess, I can't believe you had no use for those phones, but.
They're useless.
Imagine that.
Uh, I, I know. I got a phone system, two phone systems sitting in my attic.
They're useless.
The Chief Ass Valley, they didn't even want them back. It's parts for other, other customers.
Nobody wants?
Yeah.
Uh, so we got a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll sign it.
Put them next to the Mercedes out there.
Throw them in the trunk of the Mercedes.
We give them up for weight.
Nobody wanted a rotary phone.
Ugh, don't, what rotary? No, it's a tin can with a string.
Goes right to the cell.
Okay, A three is from the Southwood Conservation Commission. It's regarding the agricultural preservation restriction and apparently there's a new program, um, that would reduce the town share from ten percent to five percent if we establish a tracking system that would ensure no building permits would be issued in any properties that are currently in the APR program before they receive, uh, receiving permission from the MADAR. So, uh, uh, this is a good deal.
Yeah, I thought so. And, and did you read the rest of it? The, the system we already bought doesn't, so we're not gonna take any further expense from the town.
Right, uh, and just, just so people understand, you know, uh, our farm is in APR and if we want to add on or do something, we have to submit a plan and it goes in front of a committee for approval and.
Like maybe a sign, you'd have to get a permit.
A sign or, uh, and attach, let's say we're expanding one of the barns or something like that, they, they would, uh, look at the plan and, and talk about it and the, the committee's made up of farmers, so they understand that if you're gonna add on to.
Who's the committee again? That they would have to look for, what, what, what committee's made up of farmers in this town?
No, 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 this is the.
Congress, it's just the state.
State, okay, thank you, thank God.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, that they would handle that. So anyway, we need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A four is from, uh, Chief Bishop, uh, Southwick Police Department, a donation of thirty dollars in memory of Janice Camisa, uh, wife of, uh, former police officer John Camisa. Uh, so I need a motion to accept this thirty dollars, uh, that came from Lori Johnson in Pennsylvania.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we'll sign it.
We're gonna have one of these in Southwood.
We can put our most if you'd like.
Yeah.
Do we have enough room?
Sure.
We got plenty of room.
Oh, yeah.
There was only twenty of us at the last one, when I went in Springfield.
Or the auditorium, either one.
But you have to have snacks.
We have Murphy's doughnut.
Yeah, they, we fill the auditorium. All right, uh, five A is the MMA Legislative Breakfast Meetings, uh, to be held February twenty eighth, March sixth, and March thirteenth. Uh, I think the nearest one to us is, uh, Conway or Great Barrington, which, which.
Conway, I think is a little closer.
A little closer. Uh, it'll only be like a hundred miles, you know. Uh, so that's FYI, I attended last year's meeting with, uh, Michelle Hill, you know, it was right over in Springfield and, uh.
That was Forest Park, right?
Forest Park, it was very, very, uh, sparsely attended, but it was very interesting.
Is anybody going?
Uh, they're digesting.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, A six is a request for, um, for Michelle Hill, uh, for a transfer from the reserve fund, uh, for that part-time, uh, employee position that we're adding, uh, due to the, uh, increased workload with the elections and early voting, things like that.
Sydney has been working with them and they've been interviewing.
And I, I, I love this. Michelle didn't ask for four, forty-five hundred or forty-eight hundred or five thousand, no, she asked for four thousand seven hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-six cents.
We told her not to go over forty-seven seventy-four twenty-five. What the hell?
So would you like to make a motion to reduce that by one cent, Mr. Mogul?
I would not.
I would.
I will not accept that motion without order. Mr. Mogul made a motion, is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay, um, A seven is, uh, a notice of the retirement party, hopefully it's not a surprise, for Margot Sturovic, uh, who's retiring from the, uh, Southwood Library. It's gonna be February twenty-fourth from two to four P M. And that's a.
Monday.
A Monday, two to four P M. and we need a certificate from the select board. And Margot has done a fantastic job, we're losing a very good employee. FYI, okay, I, I don't see an eight A, I only see a nine A, so.
This was the one that was tabled, right? Usus Force.
Okay.
Eight, what do you got?
Uh, it says nine A.
Oh.
Okay, but you, yours said eight?
Well, mine doesn't table from.
Okay. It was tabled because we wanted, uh.
Yep.
A week to digest. Uh, did everybody digest it?
Yep.
No problems?
No.
Okay, uh, motion to, uh.
Motion to accept that.
A second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
It's not numbered because it's actually.
It's my own business.
It's my own business here.
Okay. And now we're to the, uh, well, wait a minute, you've got a couple of things.
Yeah, two city town agreements under the mail, we'll get to them in a minute.
All right, but I didn't wanna take this stuff out of. Okay, Greens is under old, new business or old business?
It's under old business, I'll leave it on the bottom.
It's under old business because you had already authorized it previously.
All right, then let's take these two and these, uh, agreement, one for Thirty-Five Septon Drive, uh, Bryant, and one for, uh, Six Foster Road, and that would be Hebert.
Right, those are straightforward town owner agreements under the C D B G program.
Right, which we administered by Pioneer Valley.
Who authorizes that she had assigned them?
Right.
So that we can start the housing rehab on the properties.
Need motions or just signatures?
Uh, motion for the chair to sign.
So moved.
On both. All in favor?
Aye.
Tremendous program that helps people and also helps the town itself. All right, so we're through with the action folder, so we're going to old business, we've already spoken with the fire chief, alum treatment, um, we need to, uh, finalize the date for the town meeting.
Yep, and I, I confirm with the, um, moderator that the, um, he's good for the, he's good for these days and not this one. Number the twenty-fourth?
Yep.
So he's good the twenty-third or the twenty-fifth, so, and I know you guys were gonna, and we have the room booked for both nights until we release it.
Okay.
So, what's your pleasure? We're gonna be opening up the bids next, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth at two o'clock, and the committee, the CPC's meeting the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Right.
Okay. So we'll have all the information that we need.
You'll have the actual bids in hand.
Right, right.
In fact, you'll know with that, the night of your meeting next week, because you have a five-thirty meeting before you go to the school meeting at six-thirty.
Next Tuesday?
Right, so you'll know, it's, there's only two or three vendors that can do this work.
True.
Straightforward.
Straightforward.
You'll know your numbers, the warrant article draft will be done, and then again, you would also.
Did we get Wally Park deal on there?
And then the next night CPC is meeting.
Okay.
And they already have another, uh, Wally Park thing for that ten or twelve thousand for the lighting for the pavilion.
Yep.
And then you were thinking also about accepting, um, ratifying the granting of the easement from the Congamont Heights Association to the town for the sewer easement.
And Berkshire.
And their property, Berkshire F. So those are the three things you're thinking about.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board? I mean, uh, we're not meeting March seventeenth.
National holiday?
National holiday.
So we.
There's a lot of those.
We could.
We are meeting the twenty-fourth.
We are meeting the twenty-fourth, so, and then we could have a, what I would assume would be a short town meeting, I don't anticipate it lasting very long.
What do you want, which day you wanna do it?
I would do it on Monday in case for some reason you do have to reconvene to the twenty-fifth for whatever reason and have to.
Cause of snowstorms or something?
Yeah, right, whatever, could be weather, could be something, technology.
Sounds like a great idea, great idea. Twenty-third. Backup, backup will be the twenty-fifth.
And can we make sure we put the alum treatment on last so that people will wait around? So we can bang out the other stuff first?
On the warrant?
To make sure that we don't have a quorum issue?
Yeah, cause they're gonna wanna walk out after the alum treatment and we still have one or two more things left. I, I just, you know how that works.
If that's what you want.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And then who wants to do the cable TV thing? Did you wanna do that?
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
God bless us one and all, yeah.
Got a T-shirt I can wear.
Oh, I got some stained ones.
All right, so Mr. Mogul, uh, made the suggestion, the twenty-third with backup on the twenty-fifth. All right, uh, we did, uh, Southwick PD Usus Force, special town meeting date, L M C Charter. Remember they, uh, brought something up and we, uh, looked at it and made a few changes? CAO was working on that, are you comfortable?
Well, I'd like to, uh, work on it with the device jam.
Okay, so that'll be tabled. Uh, Southwick Police Department Community Policing Grant. Are we ready to make a decision on that grant application?
Yeah, we're talking, I'm sure, I don't, it's, so it's interesting, right? So if we, if we get it, we can put another officer at the school, and I think my biggest question is, can we pull that officer that's at the school now down, put him in, on the thing, but I don't know if you can or can't.
I don't believe you can.
Right. So we're stuck with two up there for three years, and at the end of three years, we have to find that person a job for at least one year. And I'm sure our chief of police will be long gone by then, so we'll have an opening somewhere, right, as the conga line goes, so it's interesting. I, I, I don't know the answer. First you gotta get the grant to worry about it, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we let them apply for the grant and, uh, see how it works out.
Right.
I concur.
Yeah.
I don't think we need the chief's permission because he probably won't be around when the grant comes in, he'll be already retired.
I mean, just with the normal progression of things.
Yeah, yeah, there's gonna be some openings.
You know?
Yeah.
Or there'll be, yeah.
And I know that the chief.
The conga line, that's what we're calling it.
Yeah, the conga line.
I thought it was the bend.
No, I started conga line too.
Yeah. I thought it was the bend.
That's a good headline coming up.
Yeah, conga line's moving. Chief Bishop rumbled that he may be leaving within the next two years.
Who knows how that plays out, but you've got.
Judging by his hair loss and the grain is coming in, it's a distinct possibility.
Let, let me just get back to what I was gonna say.
Do you remember at this point?
That's a good radio voice, I got my show tomorrow morning, I was just practicing, sorry.
The, uh, police chief was going to reach out to the school to see, see if they would, uh.
I thought something was signed by Jennifer, I just saw that.
Oh, you.
Yeah, I just saw her.
We've got the invitation for a dinner.
What was it, dinner? Oh, she's, I'm sorry, C C Superintendent Jennifer.
Okay, okay.
Close enough.
All right, so that, that they would, see if they would consider helping fund a share.
Yeah, eighty percent of it's us, right? It's awesome.
But if we did get it, I, I hopefully that we'd have to make sure that people understood that this would be no guarantee that we'd.
Keep to forever.
Right, right, we, we're very fortunate, we have a campus type setup, uh, it's working very well with one officer.
And who pays for that officer now?
We do.
Thank you.
Town of Southwood.
That's right.
Um, it, there is no funds from Granville or Talon.
Well, we'll see where the chief stands with that issue.
Okay, so Mr. Mogul made a motion, I need a second. All in favor? Aye. Here, we're gonna sign it. Okay.
That's right.
Fire station design option, uh, from everything, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think you've, um, the questions that you had, the specific question, right, about the types of things that could go wrong.
Yeah, and I read that.
They said, no, it's when an H V C or something like that, so there were no major things. So PVC, you know, uh, seems to be the route to go, that's the company supplied ten different towns for us to look at and the, the, uh, fire chief and the building inspector are, you know, in concurrence that the PVC method should be, and I think it's the preference of the, uh, FinCom too. The only question that I need to know from you is, besides going forward with that, is you still want them to go through a design option for asphalt shingles? Because that could be more time and money. Could be more money, as more documents and more design.
Yeah, I, I, I'm comfortable with just going forward with the other because we've seen to have gotten.
Twenty-year, was a twenty-year.
Right, period. The, the big, the biggest thing was when he wrote in the letter that the warranty is better on this.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the other ones aren't, they're prorated with the labor, this is twenty, everything.
Right, and, and that's why I asked Carl to reach out, what do they fix? Or what, what's the common thing?
What are the things that go wrong?
And it's a tear or, you know, somebody accidentally putting a tear in our wind, you know, blowing something up there.
AC units, fan units on top of things tumbling.
Right, yeah, so, uh, it, it looks, all I was trying to do is play devil's advocate talking about new, new types of systems that can have.
Which apparently is not new.
I was just gonna say, new to us, but not around for a long time.
Yeah, but that, so wasn't that foam stuff that we got from General Elect was thirty years old too? Um, and that didn't work out.
So, so you're insulting firm Russo Bar.
Right.
You know?
But the, the biggest thing for me is the warranty, so, um, and everything seems to be checking out, so.
And that warranty is from the manufacturer of the roof, not the contractor that's putting it in?
Right.
And, and we will have the legal beagles.
Oh, they've already, they've already been sent the information, the front end contractor.
Cross every T, dot every I.
And they were able to do a charity bond against that?
Well, council's gotta look at all that.
But that is something that's possible.
That was raised.
It was raised.
The issue has been raised, I don't have the answer.
Yeah.
Okay, so at least to get the ball rolling, we all agree on that membrane system?
Yes, sir.
So that was the first part of the decision.
Okay.
Is asphalt in play at all?
No, I, I think we can remove that from the table.
Okay.
The majority of people feel comfortable going with the other system.
Do we have to pick a color tonight or no?
I thought you already did last one.
Okay.
Last time you met, you said gray.
Right, I didn't bring the wedding dress, I had nothing to match it with, so we're good, all right.
For the conga line?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mogul is just disgusted with both of us right now. All right.
Is he lubing up the choke himself, or I just don't know what he's doing though?
I'm thinking, I'm trying to see what the proof is on this.
He keeps sending it my way, is this virus heading? Did you bring it with you?
Taking no chances, taking no chances.
All right, so we're all set on that. Conservation restriction on the Greens of Southwick. And I think everybody's been reading the emails on this, the back and forth, the conservation restriction and the fact that.
Amended language by the Commonwealth, so you're gonna, in Beg Lane is already okay there.
Okay, so you're looking.
You haven't signed one, this is a newer version.
So we're signing this one?
Right, this is the newer version.
Okay, so we need.
It's already been recorded.
And they're gonna be, you're signing a new one.
Okay. Do we need to take an additional vote?
You should.
Okay, Mr. Mogul?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Only sign in, in this one place, Carl? As far as you know?
I don't have the rest of the pages, Russ, I only have the front page.
Okay.
But I can look at the document file.
All right.
But I believe it's already been signed, and I think that those books and pages, that might be the Mylads and the other, on the other description.
What's the?
K C.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Correct. This is, oh, that's notary, I see. I just saw this thing up. Well, these are so important because this is what, it's, this is what preserves the land in perpetuity. In previous subdivisions and the, the town is still immersed in some of them where that process wasn't followed all the way to its conclusion.
Thirty years versus.
It ends up being thirty years or less or not recorded at all, and that property becomes, it's debatable what, what could happen to that property, and, you know, people buy homes based on a subdivision plan that shows open space, but that's only good for a certain amount of time unless it's reported with the state. And I know, uh, you know, the golf course property went through this process, this one's gone through that process, and there's a few that are still left being cleaned up. And I know Dennis has been aggressively trying to clean up a couple others.
Yeah, and, uh, reading through, uh, some of our, uh, other material, uh, it was a discussion at the Conservation Commission, uh, Mr. Clark is a big proponent of it, matter of fact, one of the areas is near where you live.
Correct.
And, uh, absolutely, people buy homes based on an understanding, and the town supported a vote at town meeting based on an understanding that is in perpetuity, or that was what was implied.
That's the board's direction, is to make sure that that's addressed.
So, we, I, I hope we're, we're checking on all of the properties, um, now that we have that new system where we can check everything, you know, this is another, uh, thing that should be checked. All right, so we've gone through the action folder, we've gone through, uh, everything on old business that was listed, is, does anybody else have any old business? business that was listed, does anybody else have any old business?
Just wanna let you know that I, you know, I took care of most of the sale of the surplus property, and the old police vehicles have gone, some stuff I still might scrap, and the fire truck was picked up last week by the Schomburg Falls fire truck, so, so the big stuff is gone.
And it made it there under its own power?
Absolutely.
Of course it did.
Yep.
We're never gonna use it every day, it's gonna be right out front.
For thirty years, right?
For thirty years.
Mr. Mogulyn?
Well, in terms of the pieces of equipment that it's replacing?
No, I understand, it's all good, I just, we just, you know, a, a town of different size and we'll make that work.
Mr. Dee Dee, old business?
Um, nah, nothing I can get in trouble for.
The only thing I had was I presented the certificate from the board to Denise Hills.
Thank you for making that.
Yes, thank you very much.
It was very well attended, fire chief also spoke, it came very emotional, the lady she saved was there, it came a very emotional thing, and we're very lucky that our people, our staff is trained to take care of those things, and everybody remained calm, cool, and took care of it, they said that a lot of people didn't even know what happened.
Happened, right.
You know, that's how it happened. Okay, we're going on to new business, Mr. Steinhardt.
I don't have any.
Okay, Mr. Mogulyn?
I have just a couple.
Shoot.
Uh, I attended the planning board meeting last week with a couple of residents that are interested to explore an update to the solar bylaw to potentially allow solar in very large parcels that are, but that are located in residential zones that's currently not permitted, so they, the planning board is taking a look at that to see what should be done. And then also, one thing I wanna put on the agenda for future discussion is, I think that the town, although it has exempted itself from just about every bylaw on the books, should make it, make an effort to come into compliance with its own bylaws, specifically around the electronic signage, especially regarding the sign in the center of town. We're being very aggressive now as far as enforcing or, or at least letting business owners know about the existing electronic sign bylaw, and although the town exempted itself under the bylaw, it is, under the bylaw says that the, any, it's under the discretion of this board, this board as to compliance with that sign bylaw, so I think we should have a conference with Mr., whoever's running that sign today, and make sure that we can come at least closer to compliance with, than what we have, than what we're doing today. It's a, it's a, it's a fairness issue. Why, I can kill a mood, can I?
Alright, we're gonna take that under advisement?
Please, it was a request for a future discussion, that's all. And then lastly, was, is this a topic for, that we need to discuss or bring up for downstairs?
No, I thought that was already settled, I thought that, that wouldn't work.
Correct, but I thought that there was an alternative solution that might need some support from this board, maybe we could ask the person when they're here next?
No, we can't discuss that and.
Oh, it's executive session.
Executive session, right.
But I thought I saw her, could we have her come in?
Yeah, she's out there.
Cindy!
She did hear ya.
Aye, I have to.
Mr. Mogulyn had a question under new business he'd like to address to you.
Okay, want me to sit here?
Yes, please.
So, I, the VFW donated their former bingo shipments, and it didn't work as well as we hoped, but that there was a potential alternative solution out there?
Well, I submitted a letter to a local nonprofit organization.
You did?
Requesting a TV, which is some, what some COAs are using, is a big screen TV with software, so I thought I would try that. I, I was gonna rehab the VFW donation, which is very nice, but it's going to require
All of that's wrong.
A lot of work and putting, hanging it, it's just a lot bigger than what I thought, and it's a lot older than I anticipated.
Well, it came with that building.
It did, I thought it was a little newer, and the ladies who asked me to pursue it actually.
Came with that building.
Yeah.
And that's how we've gotten.
Yes, actually thought that it was a more modern setup, and so I brought them in and showed it to them and rehabbing it, it's just gonna be a lot.
What kinda door are we talking about?
Well, I think, well, what I was looking at was like a seventy-five inch big screen TV, which is, I mean, you can spend two thousand dollars on them, but really you can, we don't need anything that's great, so I think that would cost like eight hundred dollars.
Not the high resolution.
Yeah, we don't need that.
Seventy-five inches, you can see it from space.
Well, because it needs to be big enough for people to be able to see it, right?
Right.
Seventy-five eighty.
People who are Russ Fox's age and older, and, and. Believe me, I'm there now. You know, I'm thinking eighty inches might be better. Dude, I'm there now. I can't see it. Seventeen, a yellow ball, you need, you know, it's gotta look like that thing right up there.
Come on now.
Boom, right, Russ, can you see that? Is that clear?
And because it would have, it would show the game that you were playing.
And what, you get a little thing that plugs in the back of the TV to run the game?
So you get software, and I don't know like all the details, you, I've bet online, I've asked a couple COA directors, I actually have a meeting on Monday with a, a lot of Western Mass COA directors who are using this, it's software that you purchase, I think that's like between a hundred and a hundred and fifty dollars.
Should we hold off until she gets more consented around?
Can we, can we hold off, but can we track that on, on this, under old business pending some selectmen activity regarding same, if you could let us know the rough cost about that?
Online it says it's a hundred dollars, but I'm not.
The TV plus the.
Well, the TV could be what, it, it is whatever you just, would be decided to purchase, I mean, you could get them for three thousand dollars, or you can find one at Costco for eight hundred dollars, it kinda depends.
I haven't bought a TV in a long time, I don't know, so I don't know.
So, so we'll put it on the old business under COA bingo program.
Just make a motion to have the chairman with Mr. Steinhardt figure out the numbers and take it out of our selectmen's gift account.
Correct.
I'm sure we have a couple pennies in there.
That's a nice surprise.
That we can make this work and not have to go back and forth week after week.
And because we wanna get this done.
We need to get this done.
I agree, I just wanted to put the dollar in.
Cross it off the list.
So.
And the mounting bracket that would be needed.
That's a generous thought, Mr. Fox, and I would make that motion.
That's very generous, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, that's great.
Alright, any?
I'll give out at the salary.
I'm glad I came early.
New business. Uh, just a real quick thing, it's not new business, as you guys know, for months I was at the school committee meetings or the negotiations for raises over there with the, the union contract with the school.
Oh, that's why they're picking it.
Yeah, that's over, I think we all got, we came to terms, everything's pretty cool. In the discussion, the bus systems may be changing over there, so I might have a couple little minivans for you.
But, but they're not.
I'm just saying, before they get rid of them completely, we'll go look.
We'll go look.
Cause some of those little, little, little guys, they run up and down the mountain with the pickup people.
But, you know.
They might be. Regular minivans, like the four-stop minivan.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, not, not the small buses.
Oh, I know what he's talking about, I know what he's talking about, but I'm still envisioning.
You can envision all you want, but until that, that vision comes through, we might have something.
That vehicle that we saw at Mass Municipal about three years ago.
Yeah, 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 we're gonna get you that European taxi cab.
Right, remember they had one on display, where it lowered down, you put the wheelchair right in there.
Is that the one where you have to sing for the drive, or the guy's a, a co-host in the front or something?
Be like an Alan Swanson.
Yeah, some tunes thing, what is that there, some famous guy? But yeah, I know which one, you want the pretty ones, I get that, you like pretty stuff, but push comes to shove, we might be able to snag some older ones.
I'm trying to work on that in a different way.
Our good friend at Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
She's a great kid.
She came up with a great.
Great plan.
Great plan.
Great plan.
Erica. Right, if there are monies left over.
Like we got your bus.
If rewarded, it's like we got your bus.
For previous grants.
Yeah, I understand.
That she felt that might be the smarter move, take that leftover money, see if the state would approve getting one of those vehicles.
The question is, would you wanna use that same money for a different issue that she's putting in her capital plan, which is to reconfigure her offices?
Well, like I said.
Anyways.
Like I said.
That on the farm.
It's gonna rain tomorrow.
I love that you think about it, though, that's wonderful, I'm so fortunate.
Here's my thought process.
The seniors are very fortunate.
So if there's a minivan parked out front with no plates, don't say nothing, keys are in at your office, that's all I'm saying.
My thought process is, I know you're having problems getting volunteers for buses, okay? I thought that if you had one of these smaller vehicles.
For one-two shots.
Right, that more people might volunteer, they wouldn't be as reluctant because it's smaller, cause some people have a fear of using mirrors and backing up big vehicles, things like that, but if it's a smaller vehicle, you might.
Your companion program.
Right, but I, right, I'm still figuring that out, I'm trying to come up with a new program.
We're still waiting to hear from, uh, not Pioneer Valley, but PV, PVTA.
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 About what the ride share, the other stuff.
Remember we met with PVTA and they were gonna submit information, we're still waiting for that.
Yeah, we're still waiting for that, yeah.
We were talking about that two weeks ago.
So we've been basically waiting for a bus for a long time.
Well, no, that's, that's a different issue.
Right.
That's a different issue.
There's keys in the van out front issues.
That's about our joining the PVTA as a second community.
Right.
That's a different issue than.
Which is now legal to do, you know, and they, I.
We'll set reminders, in fact, I even had.
We don't need both, probably, but, yeah.
Well, we've learned that, that bus that we have as a, you know, we have homes, right? Franklin, and then we have our own, so it's, we're a growing community.
We are, yeah.
We're a.
That could help, yeah.
Graying community, sure, Russ, I don't know how you do it.
The twenty-twenty census is very important.
I just let it go myself, I just, you know.
Graying community.
Salt and pepper, baby.
So anyways, that was my thought process.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
There's keys in the van out front issues.
Alright.
I'll take the white, one of the white pickup trucks that are parked outside.
The only other thing I had under new business, and it could be slash old business, is we need to set up a meeting with police, fire, park, conservation, and probably park and rec also, to discuss in our IT person, right? Because we wanna discuss signage and rules and regulations for our conservation areas